Next is the Urbana City Council. We will begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smyke?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is November 16th, 2009.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Heather Stevenson, second by Robert Lewis. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we'll have the agenda as stands. Next, we're to petitions and communications. If anyone would like to address the Urbana City Council, there are little cards to fill out. So I have one card. If anyone else wants to speak, you can fill out a card and give it to the clerk, please. The one person is Gary Seiko.
Can I wait until the matter comes up?
Sure. Whatever, your choice.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council? Okay, we'll move on. I don't believe we have any old business, reports of standing committees or reports of special committees. So we'll go right to reports of officers. Any reports of officers? Tom Corino, Economic Development Director.
Good evening. Earlier today, you should have received an electronic version of this month's economic development report. As I stated in the email, we're, the format, we've looked to condense the format a little bit to make sure that we're highlighting just the items that are of interest and the most important items. But we will be bringing to your attention anything major. The ongoing items, we'll report to you when significant actions happen. But as far as downtown, a lot of activity in downtown. Red Star Liquors is a new tavern that has opened at the former Embassy location. The Wooden Hanger is a new women's clothing store at the corner of Ray Street and Main Street. Ribbon Cutting was held for V. Picasso, the tapas restaurant where the office was formerly located. The Urbana Business Association has begun the 2009 Holiday Market season, which will run on Saturdays from 8:00 until 1:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. through December 19th. And an item that we'll actually technically be reporting to you next month, but construction has started on the inline shops at Gateway Shops in behind the University of Illinois Credit Union. So that's great progress there. Nikki Marie's Italian Restaurant has opened at the former Timbers location. Wireless Mikes has opened, that's the first tenant in Chris Creek's inline shops along Philo Road. Ribbon Cutting was held at the new Free Star Bank at an outlot in front of Meyer, and the facility is beautiful. And Market at the Square ended another successful season on November 14th. And Lisa Brolts will be putting together a report for you in the coming months on exactly the details of how the season went. That's all I have to report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No questions. Thank you very much, Tom. Bill Gray, Public Works Director.
A copy of this will be in the Thursday packets, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that there will be a public open house for the High Cross Road multi-use path on Tuesday, December 22nd, at the Stone Creek Golf Club, second floor, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. At 5:30, there would be a brief presentation by city staff, but it'd be more or less an open house format. This meeting is required as part of the receiving the funding that we're receiving for the multi-use path project. The, we just recently received word of the preliminary design report being approved. So now, between now and the end of the year, we want to get this meeting done for another deadline that IDET has. So just wanted to give you a heads up on Tuesday, December 22nd, 5:00 to 7:00, at the Stone Creek Golf Course, second floor.
Thank you very much. I would like to say that last week, I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Water Council, and people around the country are talking about the same topics that we're concerned about. Not only drinking water and sanitary sewers, but also storm sewers. And the city of Philadelphia apparently is using green design and keeping the storm water on the land instead of getting it off as quickly as possible. And the new version of complete streets deals with the same kind of water designs that we've seen in some of the more progressive presentations that we've had at this council. So I think it is a field that's very rapidly changing. Any other reports of officers? Okay, we'll move on under new business. Item one is Urbana's bicycle-friendly community application update. Jennifer Selby here.
I have a presentation for you tonight. I just wanted to update you a little bit about what it means to become a bicycle-friendly community. One of the goals from the Urbana Bike Master Plan was to become a bicycle-friendly community, and it also is one of the proposed council goals coming up. So in case you hadn't heard about what exactly that means, this is just kind of a brief presentation of that. A bicycle-friendly community, it's a program that's developed by the League of American Bicyclists, recognizes municipalities that support bicycling. So we would provide accommodation for cycling. We encourage our residents to bike for transportation and recreation. So we're already doing that. It's a program that started in 1996. It was pretty simple to become a bicycle-friendly community then. In 2002, they revised it and made it a little bit more difficult. There are four different award levels. You have platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. And once you receive one, then you have that designation for four years, and then you would reapply and either go for the same designation or try to go up a level. The picture on the right there is the first page of the application. There are five parts to the application. You address engineering, education, encouragement, evaluation, and planning, and enforcement. So the first section is kind of generic, a community profile. You just fill out information like your population, your climate, your age and race distribution, and then you start going into the five Es. So in engineering, you might address things like bike parking, or how many miles of facilities you have, whether it's bike lanes, bike paths, bike routes, any type of facilities. In education, do you have a Safe Routes to School program? What type of educational materials or classes do you offer in the city? Not just by the city, but by other groups as well. In the encouragement, you know, what kind of bicycle events are held in the city? Are there any Bike Month, which is May, events? Any organizations, any groups? In the enforcement, do we have any enforcement campaigns? Do we have officers that are on bikes? And then the evaluation and planning, do we keep bike counts? Do we have a record of the crashes? Do we have a bicycle master plan? The application in PDF form is 28 pages. That's uncomplete, so it's a pretty long application. And it's due February 19th, and it's an online application. So I'll be working on it over the next couple of months, since I'll be on maternity leave starting next week. As far as the review, like I said, it's an online application. It'll just go straight to the LAB, and there'll be a committee that reviews it. And then if they feel that we are, we can maybe possibly be a bronze or another level, then they would actually come to the community and speak with cyclists in the community to get an idea of if we really are bicycle-friendly. Then we would get either platinum, gold, silver, or bronze. And like I said, it was for four years. And regardless of whether or not we are designated, we still receive feedback on how we can improve cycling for our community. So it is a good information to get back. Applying in February, we would find out in May, which is National Bike Month. And there would be a ceremony. We would get a road sign similar to that sign there, and there would be a formal press announcement. So just to give you an idea of some of the communities that are bicycle-friendly, there's only three platinum, Davis, Portland, and Boulder. Four golds, you know, a few more silvers. Most of them are bronze. And when we're looking at maybe something comparable to us, Ann Arbor, Michigan, Bloomington, Indiana, is it Carmel, Indiana? Milwaukee, Wisconsin, maybe? And then Schaumburg is bronze, and I believe Naperville is as well. So it's only Schaumburg, Naperville, and Chicago in Illinois. We would be the first non-Chicago area community in Illinois. And as far as population size, a community less than 50,000, there's 28 of those. 50 to 100,000, there's 42. 200 to almost a million, there's 22. And then the million plus are the three communities that have that designation. So just going through each of the five Es, the first one would be engineering. What do we have as far as engineering on the ground? You know, what kind of bike paths do we have? What kind of bike lanes? You know, how do we accommodate bicyclists on the roads and on paths? They also look at bike parking and our entire network. So we do have a Bike Master Plan that lays everything out as far as the network. We have bike lanes. We have great bike parking. So I think we're really strong in engineering. In education, it's education for cyclists and motorists. How do we teach people how to ride bikes? Do we have any LEAK certified instructors in the community? How do we get safety information out? Bike maps, tip sheets? We do have the Champaign-Urbana Area Bike Map that CCB put out. We have the Bike Parking Guidelines. We had Train the Trainer training here. We have the Share the Road Bus. Champaign County Bikes does a lot of education. We have the Bike Project. The Safe Routes to School Project has an education campaign. We do bike rodeos a lot. So we do have quite a bit of education going on. We're going to be doing a education video in the spring that will be aired on UPTV and available. For encouragement, what do we do to encourage bicycling and back to the Bike Month, which is in May? Bike to Work Week, maps, route finding signage, bike rides, commuter programs, a Safe Routes to School program. We have a great Safe Routes to School program in town, the CU Safe Routes to School Project, which is working on a, or exists on a Safe Routes to School grant. There's different rides, you know, for example, the Align Eye for Cancer. We have, all the buses in town have the bike racks. There's the picture on the bottom there is the Light the Night event, which, those were pictures actually from 2008, but it was held again in 2009. We have the bike maps. We have Greenways and Trails maps. We have a lot of encouragement type. And we actually are, you know, community development is working on some events for the Bike Month this, in 2010, with the city of Champaign. For enforcement, is there a liaison between enforcement and the cycling community? Do we have police officers on bikes? Do we have targeted enforcement? We do have officers on bikes. We have, we don't have any laws requiring helmets or the use of side paths or anything like that, but we are looking at some enforcement-type activities that we receive from Chicago that we're looking into. And our officers also, I believe it was two years ago, did special training on enforcement of cyclists and motorists' behavior. And then there's evaluation and planning. So that's back to the bike plan, bike crashes, bike counts, those types of things. And RPC does a lot of that for us. So the benefits of becoming a bicycle-friendly community, reduced traffic. If more people are on bikes, there'll be less people in cars. Better air, improved health, public health, improved quality of life, higher property values, business growth, and increased tourism. So as far as the steps to making Urbana a bicycle-friendly community, just the political commitment from the mayor and council, and if it is a goal, then I would say that that would be the commitment. There is an action plan for bicycle-friendly communities, which I'll pull up when I take this down. It just basically, it would be a resolution that would be passed probably in February prior to submitting the application that just says, "We support becoming a bicycle-friendly community, and these are the steps that we're going to take to do that." And then implementing the action plan are all the five Es. Training engineers to become, to better accommodate bicyclists, doing the Bike Month events, the Bike to Work Week, training instructors, encouraging motors to share the road, and then developing a detailed bike plan, which we have, and then submitting the application, which is February 19th. And if you wanted more information on, there's a lot of really great information. If you just Google bicycle-friendly community and pull up the League of American Bicyclists webpage, there's a lot of frequently asked questions on there. So there's a lot of great information on there. And then I will pull up this action plan. So it says, "We recognize that bicycling can improve the environment, reduce congestion, save lives, boost the economy, public safety, improve health, and that we would adopt a target level of bicycle use," which we actually did in the Bicycle Master Plan. We wanted to increase from 8% to 12%. Provide bicycle access to the community. We've done that with the Bicycle Master Plan. Promote bicycling, encourage bicycle use among employees. There's just a list of things, and this would be in more of a, more of our resolution-type form. So I will probably bring this back in February prior to the submittal of the application. And what I'm looking at is maybe putting together a kind of a small steering committee once I really get into it, because I'm going to need help on several of these parts. I'll need help from community development and the police, Regional Planning Commission, the university, the MTV, the Champaign County Bikes. I'm sure BPAC will be involved and have just a small group to review before we actually submit the final application. And that's all I have on it.
Okay, thank you very much. Heather.
I just have one question. I was, as you were presenting the education piece. Have the bicycle, have you guys looked into working with the Secretary of State when it comes to, this has happened multiple times. I see bicyclists shooting off of sidewalks. And when I read, when I go to the DMV, my sister works at the DMV, and I've picked up, you know, a bicycle, the rules of the road, and has bicycles in there. And that's clearly something that should not be going on, and I see it all the time. It's not just a one-time thing. I see it multiple times. And I'm not talking about sidewalks that are bicycle paths. I'm talking about sidewalks that, I mean, there's been multiple times where I felt like I could have just hit that person. And so I thought it would be a good education piece to work with the Secretary of State to have bicyclists know, there are rules of the road for you too. It's not just the motorists that have to follow these rules.
And that's really what our education video is going to focus on, is bicyclists, how they need to behave in traffic, but also how, like a lot of the confusion we get is how motorists aren't sure how to ride with the bike lanes and how to turn across them and those types of things. So it is for both motorists and bicyclists, but it is going to be for bicyclists as far as stopping at stop signs, you know, yielding at crosswalks to pedestrians. If you're on the sidewalk, acting like a pedestrian, those types of things. And we actually, I don't know if anybody's seen this, we have bike information on the city's website, and there's a link to the Secretary of State Rules of the Road. Pull that up. It's under Public Works, Bike Urbana here. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, I noticed in all the lists of things that go with the application, there really isn't a mention of educating bicyclists, but that's what we get most of the complaints about, is people downtown who are almost hit by bicyclists, who just insist on riding on the sidewalk even though we have signs to say not to.
Right. And we're putting up new signs.
So, you know, I think there are, obviously motorists are very concerned. They don't know what to do, as you said. But there just seems to be bicyclists that don't realize what danger they're putting themselves in and how nerve-wracking it is to motorists and pedestrians. So it really does have to be a very broad educational campaign, and I hope we do mention something in the written materials. I realize this is going to a bicycling association, but that's the kind of feedback that we get day to day from people in the city. Diane?
I have a question and a comment. The question is, is there any advantage to being a bicycle-friendly community in terms of when you apply for state and federal grants or apply for funding? And the comment is, I would second what has been said about the education particularly, and the questions I get are regarding Philo Road and how people are supposed to drive along with the bike lanes and, just, people need to know.
Right. And that was one of, we were actually going to use Philo Road as one of our staging locations for the video. And I would say it probably doesn't hurt when you apply for grants to know that we are a bicycle-friendly community. And I don't know why this isn't opening.
Heather.
And Jennifer, aside from Philo Road, can we use something that is not a bike path? A road that people, you know, I don't, I'm trying to think, Main Street, for example, where people are riding on sidewalks. And I've had it happen at nighttime, where I'll leave the Courier Cafe, and I'll turn to go onto Main Street, and someone will be darting, just going on, say, going east on Main Street. So I'm going south on Vine, and they just dart right over there off the sidewalk. So I think, yeah, it's great to have an example of a road where there are bicycle paths, but people ride bikes where there aren't bicycle paths. So I think that's a really important key ingredient in the education piece, is what do you do when there are bike paths?
Right. And I'm sorry, this is not pulling up for some reason, but if you want to check it out, under Public Works Department and Bike Urbana, I'm not sure why this is running so slowly, but there is some information.
Well, actually, you know, the bicycle education is a really tough one, and getting people to overcome habits of years and years of poor cycling is a big factor. You know, I stand by what I've said repeatedly, is that if you want to solve the problem of downtown bicycling on sidewalks, you got to put in bike lanes on the roads. Now, on the back of the map, of which there were 30,000 copies distributed in the last two years, and 30,000 copies are going to get printed again in April with some revisions, on the back is a long education piece that goes over the state laws, etiquette, car, bicycle interactions, and addresses exactly some of the things that you've talked about. And, you know, we try, these are available free, bike shops, farmer's market, city building, and a lot of other public places, the libraries, that we are starting to run out. Like I said, we will get, we'll be doing another printing in the spring. But, you know, education begins with smaller children, and I think that's one of the big pushes is with the Safe Routes to School and training that younger generation on how to properly ride on bikes. The other thing I'd like to point out, that the single biggest advantage to adding bicycle infrastructure is that there's a direct correlation with safety. The more bicycle infrastructure you add, the safer your community becomes for bicycles, pedestrians, and vehicles. The city of Portland, which is one of those 1 million-plus platinum level, has had no bicycle fatalities for the last two or three years now. And that's in a city of over a million people. And they're, you know, they've reached that platinum level status. They have an extensive education program. Well, they have every one of these categories in the very extensive category, as you would expect. So we can simply try to catch up at this point.
Brandon?
I just wanted to second Heather's suggestion. I really like that idea of having, even if it's a short segment of the video, be downtown, remind people, when you're not on a street with bike lanes, where should you be? And anti-specifically state that in downtown, we prohibit biking on the sidewalks. I don't know if that was one of the specific topics we talked about, but...
It is, because I believe it's illegal in downtown Champaign as well. And we are doing this video with Champaign, so some of it will be filmed in Champaign, and some of it we filmed in Urbana. So we wanted to touch on that, because that's something that they want to address as well.
Yeah, I think that's great. And as a last comment, I'd wanted to thank you and congratulate you on your maternity leave, which starts very soon. We're very glad that you get to have maternity leave, and we're also very glad that you have a great project to work on while you're gone. So, thank you.
Dennis?
I'm really kind of curious to know, and I wonder if there's information or even perhaps a map that's been created to show the demographics of our bike riders in Urbana. Where do these people live? Where do they come from? Are there, because if we know where they lived, then we could also see where they probably are going to be headed, you know? And I'm just really curious to, I wonder if there's a way of accumulating the knowledge, maybe by the registration of bicycle licenses? Because all, I understand that all bicycles need to be licensed by the city. Is that correct?
You don't, I don't think you have to register your bike.
You don't have to register. You don't have to buy a license?
Uh-uh. You can register, so that if it was stolen, then they would have your information.
Okay, so the city doesn't require them to be licensed or anything? Well, I mean, if we had that, that would be a very interesting way of collecting the information about where bicyclists live. And I'm really curious to know that. So I wonder if that's possible? Is there any way of finding out who owns our bicycles and who uses them the most?
As part of the Bike Master Plan workshop, we did break up into geographical groups and did talk about where do you bike? Where do you want to bike? What routes do you take? And that information is all in the appendices of the Bike Master Plan. That would be from 2007.
And that's a completely different question. I'm really curious. I would think this would be like really important data to have, and it seems to be missing, and I'm just wondering if there's a way of resolving that.
We could have a bicycle census. Brandon?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other response to that too, it is, it would be really interesting data to know. The data on even how many, you know, like we have traffic count data that's pretty good for most segments of most busy streets in Urbana, because we're doing traffic counts all the time for different reasons. And we know the ADT of lots of different main roads. But we actually don't know the bike traffic count or the bike, you know, the average daily number of bikes that cross certain intersections or things much, except for the fact that we've just started instituting some counts in key locations to try to even get a handle on it. Because prior to this, there was nothing. We knew nothing about how many people would, on an average day, travel by bike to campus, or to work, or to school, or anyplace. So we're just starting to get even the most, little pieces of data from a couple key points in the city about how many bikes pass certain key streets or certain key intersections. But I think doing a whole census of, you know, every bike and where they live... But I think doing a whole census of, you know, every bike and where they live would be a bigger undertaking. I think part of the, part of the planning was geographically broken down, so that no matter what neighborhood of Urbana you might live in or work in, you would have some choice, should you want to use a bike to get to your work or school or daily needs like a grocery store or a pharmacy, that you would have a choice of some safe route to use a bike to get from your neighborhood to where you're going. So that in any neighborhood, that would be possible. But I don't think we have a census to really be able to say, you know, that, that Ward Five has this many cyclists and Ward One has this many cyclists, or they, you know, they live in this block or this street. That, that we don't know, and I don't think, I think we're a long way from having numbers at that level of detail.
Well, just as a matter of discussion then, I, I would really think that that would be a really vital piece of information to fill in, and I would encourage that an attempt be made. Because I think it's real important to know, you know, what parts of the community are very strong cyclists and where they're headed. I mean, I, I mean, yes, we do have a master plan for the entire city, and that connectivity is important, but it would seem to be significant to know, to know your population, not just that people ride bikes in Urbana. And I, and I don't know if it's possible, if the city could, could use the federal census as somehow, as a rider to have another question. I don't know if it's even legal to add additional questions to the census collection data, but we're coming up to a census collection year, and it might be really worthwhile to, to contemplate that.
I don't know the answer to that, about the census. And then I thought the MTD, my plan may have, there may have been a question on that about, is, are there, do you have a bicycle in your, in your household? I, I think there might have been a question on that. But again, it, it went out to, I think, every, anybody could have answered the questions, but I don't know how many responses they got on that.
And it's amazing that the city's not collecting a license fee, since the city is so interested in regarding its fee schedule for the coming year and the budget.
I think Urbana used to have registration. I didn't, I don't think we're doing very much with it now, but I'm interested in the platinum cities, whether they have bicycle registration and also what their education programs are, so that we can borrow from them instead of having to reinvent something. Because if they've cut down fatalities in Portland, you know, it is zero for a few years, they're doing a lot right, and I think we should know how they're getting across to the public.
Cities in Portland, like Portland, they have it in their public school system, like for fifth and sixth graders, it's an, it's an education program that you learn in school, and it's very extensive. I don't know how they pay for it. Is it the whole state?
And it's in conjunction with Safe Routes to School.
Well, do they have programs for adults? I mean, just to get out to the general population, because there's probably a lot of people that move there that might not go through the elementary schools, so.
Right.
I think there are a lot we could borrow, probably. Okay, anyone else? Charlie?
Yeah, we need to start by getting some, some, you know, certified trainers in the community, too, and that would help. And that's something that's, that Champaign County Bikes is starting to address. And if we can get some people to step forward, I think Champaign County Bikes will even help pay for some of the tuition and getting that done. So I, I did want to thank Jennifer for, you know, while she's sitting here, we still have her for maybe another week or so. She seems to be really good with due dates, you know? Goodwin Avenue is just about done, she's timed it really well, really close, cutting it real close, actually.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, Goodwin Avenue has basically been retrofit as a complete street from, from the Madigan Lab at Gregory all the way to, basically Springfield. And it's a wonderful experience, both on, in a vehicle and on a bike. I've been, I've been, I've tried it both ways, I really enjoy it on a bike. I've now moved my regular commute to the north end of campus, which I do a couple, two, three times a week, from Matthews to Goodwin Avenue, because on Goodwin, you can basically just fly. You know where all the cars are, you know where all the pedestrians are, you've got your, you know, you've got your space on a bike, and you, you know, you stop at all the stop signs, you watch for the pedestrians, it's much easier now. And, and literally, it's, it's much safer, much easier for me to get from the south end of campus to the north end of campus using that. And so thank you very much for your work. You, you, you've cut it pretty close on all these due dates, but you're pretty good at it, so I'm looking forward to the February one, and good luck with the upcoming one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Brandon?
Yeah, just one more comment about the bike education like they have in Oregon and Colorado. We've, we've been talking about it a lot, there are a lot of, there's a lot of education happening, like that slide Jennifer showed, there's things for kids, things, you know, light the night, there's all kinds of programs happening. They aren't all under one umbrella yet of a countywide comprehensive education plan for bike safety. And that's one of the goals that even is mentioned in the LRTP document and, and in some of our bike planning, that ultimately some coordinated education and safety campaign is needed. And I think one of the big questions is, who could coordinate that or who could run it? You know, in that we're doing an amazing job in Public Works with the resources we have and Jennifer's dedication to this, but we don't have a trainer in Public Works or in Community Development or in the police, you know, they have so little spare time as well. And we need to be doing this with the county and with Champaign and with campus folks. So one of the conversations I think for us to solve in the coming years is how to bring what is now some disjointed public safety and education campaigns around biking and pedestrian safety into, into some coherent, you know, umbrella or sort of managed program, so that even if different agencies are doing different parts of it, we're all coordinating to try to hit the same messages and supporting each other in knowing that, yeah, from, from grade school to middle school to high school to, you know, to students who move here, to grownups who come here later in life, that at every point, there's some chance for education and for people to learn how to safely share the roads.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 2009-12-036R, a resolution to endorse the Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study Long Range Transportation Plan for 2035. And, okay, let's start with Robert Myers.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? You never know if it's okay with the microphone. This item is a request for the Urbana City Council to endorse the draft Long Range Transportation Plan, prepared as part of a cooperative effort between the cities of Champaign and Urbana, the Village of Savoy, University of Illinois, MTD, Champaign County, and IDOT. An overview of the draft plan was presented to you on November 2nd, 2009, and a draft plan is also posted on the CUAT's website. The plan was prepared by CUAT's staff, and I'll talk just in a second about the planning process, but the purpose of the plan is to detail how our regional transportation system should evolve over the next 25 years. And it's important to note that the proposed plan supplements the regional transportation plan that was approved in 2005. In fact, some of the projects that were approved through the previous plan, which have not been completed as of yet, are also incorporated in this latest draft. CUAT staff completed the draft plan over an 11-month period, following federal requirements for creating long-range transportation plans, receiving federal funding. And in fact, this plan is a requirement for submittal to the Federal Highway Administration, and the Federal Highway Administration has, has regulations and requirements about how the plan is to be prepared, the software that's to be used, how the models are to be run, how the public process is to be completed, et cetera. And of course, this plan fully meets all of those requirements. The multi, there was a multi-agency steering committee, which guided the planning process. And in addition to the partners that I just mentioned before, I should note that there's, in addition to steering committee, there's also a policy committee, and Mayor Pressing serves as the city of Urbana's representative on the policy committee. Additionally, there's a technical committee, which Libby Tyler and Bill Gray are city staff to serve on and advise in a technical capacity. The, the process for developing the plan included extensive public participation, included, I'll have to refer my notes, so don't forget some of these, but an open, open houses, focus group meetings, a webpage, Facebook page, direct mailings, newspaper and television advertisements, flyers, technical feedback from member agencies and presentation, presentations to community groups. And the Plan Commission actually reviewed the long-range draft plan at their November 5th meeting. And those minutes of that meeting are attached to your, to this agenda item, are in your Possibly the, the heart of the plan, providing the quickest overview, I should say, is Chapter Eight, which is a vision for 2035. And it provides a vision for different modes of transportation in our region. And I would like to add that I believe the vision balances not only the traditional roadway improvements and extension projects, and I should say that these included both improvements to existing roadways and extensions to create this regional network, but also includes major transit service upgrades, bicycle and greenway improvements, and high-speed rail connections. And one project I think that could be overlooked, that I would just like to write a plug for, that I liken this plan, is the core area high-capacity transit system, which, as part of this plan, would provide higher-capacity service within downtown, essentially, Champaign and Urbana, and connecting the downtowns with other areas of the city. I did have a comment at the Plan Commission meeting, what does this really mean? Does this mean widening streets and downtowns in order to accommodate high-capacity transit? It does not mean, mean that. What it means is things like street reconstructions and platforms for people to board and leave buses and information about when new buses are coming, et cetera. Also, I should add that the Urbana projects proposed are entirely consistent with the city's capital improvement plan, the 2005 comprehensive plan, the Bicycle Master Plan, Greenways and Trails Plan, and High Cross Road Corridor Plan. And in fact, if I could comment also, I think this plan is largely a reflection of already existing and adopted plans that this council's already reviewed and adopted. In the past, the city of Urbana has benefited from, for instance, the 2005 Long Range Transportation Plan. Our participation has helped us secure funding for complete street upgrade to Lincoln Avenue, Goodway Avenue, and Philo Road, and also current upgrades for Windsor Road. Those have all been benefits that we've received. So for tonight's consideration, city staff recommends that the city council endorse the final long-range transportation plan. While city council support is not a requirement for plan approval, endorsement is recommended to recognize the cooperative efforts of our agencies in the region for regional, true regional transportation planning, and also for continued use of state and federal funding. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. We also have other people here as well, such as Bill Gray, Public Works Director, obviously an expert on all aspects of, I'm setting up.
Oh, okay, do you want to start with the public input? The first person who, or did Bill Gray want you to say something first, before we go to public input?
All right. I just wanted to recognize a far superior expert than myself, is Rita Black, is here, who's principal author, along with Eric Calverson. They're here to provide any technical support, answers if need be.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's hear from Gary Seiko, and then we'll open it up for council questions and comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Just please.
Jennifer's last, sort of interesting in the bicycle friendly. My question to her would be, if we get the bicycle-friendly community, do we put signs on Wright Street facing east that say, "You are leaving"? A bicycle-friendly community?
You need to say your name and address and keep your remarks to five minutes, please.
Okay, my name is Gary Seiko, I live at 506 West Vermont, Urbana. I'm a member also of the Urbana Sustainability Advisory Commission and Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. I have strong interests in transportation sustainability, and I've looked at the plan pretty carefully. The document provides a wealth of information about the CU urbanized area that's necessary for transportation planning. The plan breaks what I think is new ground in recognizing the importance of facilitating alternate modes of energy-efficient transportation and reducing sprawl, and Eric Calverson has been quite responsive to my relentless questions and requests for more information about the plan, and some answers even showing up in recent changes and additions to the plan. However, the length and thoroughness of the plan make it difficult to summarize, so I've come up with just two bottom lines that I think provide what I think would be useful summary of the plan and its potential impact. The first bottom line concerns total vehicle miles. Generally agreed by most scientists that we'll need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 80% below 1990 levels by 2050 to avoid the worst effects of climate change. At its November 3rd meeting, the Urbana Sustainability Advisory Commission recommended a short-term goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions 25% below 205 levels by 2020. And research conducted by Urbana's environmental manager, Rock Fletcher, shows that transportation is responsible for 20% of Urbana's total greenhouse gas emissions. Also, so an essential ingredient of our climate action plan will be to reduce our dependence on the auto bill and the oil it consumes. And consistent with this concern, the LRTP on Page 11, under Roadway Vision, does state as goals, reduce vehicle, reduce vehicle miles traveled and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, both of which are important and necessary goals. And yet, on Page 132 of the plan, they predict an 83% increase in vehicle miles traveled if the plan is completely implemented, and a smaller 65% increase if no plan is, planned improvements are made. So if the report explains, the report explains that this 83% increase does not fully take into account active modes of transportation, where expected to reduce this, but this 83% remains the best prediction for 2035 as the plan is finalized. If you then take this and look into the future, to 2050, this would, continued growth would mean an almost 2.5 times more vehicle miles traveled in 2050. 2.5 times more vehicle miles, and we need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by about 80%. So it seems apparent that an 83% increase in vehicle miles traveled in 25 years will make it very difficult to reach our long-term reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. So that's sort of one bottom line, is the 83% increase. The second bottom line concerns center versus the fringe. On Page 11 of the plan, under Land Use Vision, one of the goals is sustainable and compact development. And to create a bottom line for this was a little bit more difficult, but I did a breakdown of the money to be spent for new and improved roads on the fringe of the urbanized area and the center. Now, the center is very generously defined as the area that's sort of south and east of the two interstates, High Cross Road on the east, Curtis Road on the south. And anything within that is what I'm calling the center, and beyond that is the fringe. So I had to sum up 229 different light items for road projects, and it turns out 54% of the money is for the fringe and 46% is for the center. A large percentage of the fringe money is $71 million to widen I-74 to six lanes from Prospect Dam to Mohammed, and this is despite the fact that the report's own modeling shows that no part of I-74 will be congested or even nearly congested in 2035 if this is not done. So it doesn't seem to be much of a need for that. And then just a quick perspective from the, what's going on now on the world stage, everybody's aware that Copenhagen, this is the first day of the UN Conference on Climate Change, and I just wanted you to imagine that you are representative at the conference from the nation of Maldives, island nation, Indian Ocean. It has an average ground level of five feet above sea level, and the highest point is seven feet above sea level. You hear that the city of Urbana is reviewing a long-term transportation plan for the next 25 years. And you might even know that Urbana is the home of the University of Illinois, which is a very prestigious worldwide reputation research university. You might even know that Don Whibley is at the university, and he is internationally known and respected for his work on predicting and limiting and adapting to climate change. And you also know that the United States has produced 26% of the And you also know that the United States has produced 26% of the cumulative CO2 over the last 50 years, which is more than twice as much as China, more than 10 times as much as China on a per capita basis. So you know this, and you might reasonably expect the city of Urbana would have a very enlightened and responsible approach to a transportation planning, one that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions by reducing vehicle miles traveled and promoting compact development to reverse sprawl. But then you look at the LRTP on the internet, remember, you're from the Maldives, and you see that it's predicted to have an 83% increase in vehicle miles by 2035, and more than half the money to be spent over the next 25 years will be used to build and improve roads on the fringe of the urbanized area. And you begin to realize that if this really is the typical type of plan throughout the U.S. and the developed world, that most of your nation will be underwater before the end of the century. If you were this delegate from the Maldives in Copenhagen, I think you might be either mystified or shocked, or perhaps a bit of both. So those are just two bottom lines I wanted to throw out there, the 83% in predicted vehicle miles traveled, and the 54% of funds to be spent on fringe development, and I hope that's useful in your consideration of the plan.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to ask you about the 83%. That's assuming that the efficiency of the vehicles won't change, if you're sort of extrapolating and say that's going to be 83% increase in greenhouse gases.
Well, that's right. The relationship, I'm just talking about the vehicle miles. And so you would need to have some remarkable change in technology to actually reduce it by about 20% instead of maybe 83%.
Right, but you know, you're saying that that does not include bicycle vehicle miles? It's all automobiles, is what your assumption is? It's not mass transit or anything? It's just automobiles?
That, I believe, is the.
We have, we have Rita Black nodding her head. Okay.
Do you want to make a question?
Sure.
The model that we have to measure vehicle mile travels in the community does not include at this time pedestrians and bikes as part of the model. Therefore, the numbers that we get do not take all the trips that can be removed from the network if we account for bike and pedestrian. Then we are working on improving the current travel demand model that we have in place to account for trips done by pedestrians and bikes. And we know that counting that and taking into consideration that we are implementing the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan, we are implementing the bicycle vision for the city of Champagne, and we are working on developing Campus Bike Master Plan, the number of bikers in the community will increase significantly, which will diminish the number of vehicle trips in the community. At the same time, once you have that in place, and you have a high-capacity transit system in place, then more pedestrian trips will be done. The connecting bicycle trips with pedestrian trips and transit trips will reduce significantly the number of vehicle mile travel. But at this point in time, we are not able to account for that.
The other question that I have is, we have seen a decrease in motor fuel tax, which is based on cents per gallon, so that means that there are fewer gallons being sold. And I think in the long-term, gasoline prices are going to keep rising. So is that factored into your model? Because you're coming up with a big increase in vehicle miles traveled, even though we've seen decreases recently.
Yes, that's another element that we are working on our travel demand model. At this time, we are doing improvement to the mode choice, and at the same time that we are doing improvement to the sub-model of mode choice, that's taking into consideration all the different modes, will be incorporating into the model fuel prices and other elements that will allow us to determine how much we are saving from fuel consumption and all that due to the reduction on vehicle mile travel. But at this time, we cannot account for that because we are working.
So what are you doing? Are you, are you just saying, basing it on population growth and current?
Yes. At this time, we are just extrapolating the population, and based on that estimating the number of trips in the future, assuming that everybody will be driving instead of riding bikes, or walking, or taking transit trips. That's the main reason.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just quickly respond to that? Because I think what Rita's saying too, I agree, is that, that 83% is sitting there, and it's so crucially important it is to emphasize the mass transit and the bicycle pedestrians, because without a very heavy emphasis there, this will clearly be unsustainable. So I'm glad you came up here.
Any questions from the council? Charlie?
Yeah, well, you know, some of the modeling, you know, this, this leads me to one of the areas that I'm having the most trouble with, which is the whole modeling data aspect. You know, there's a lot of the inputs for the modeling data are based on 2000, year 2000 census data. You know, we're just really, you know, this really is a plan that should be done right after the census data comes out. Okay? And so, so one of the things that, that, you know, I'm hoping for, and I've heard it discussed, and the possibilities that we can do a, an addendum, or a, adopt some kind of corrected version after the census data comes out. And I wanted to hear from the policy and, and the technical committees about how you might go about doing that to incorporate new modeling and new information, you know, and so on. You know, two years, you know, would it be two years from now, or something like that?
Well, we have always said that when we had the State Committee meetings, that this plan was mostly an update to comply with the federal requirements. But our idea is, once we have the census data, and we have a better mode choice model incorporated into our travel demand model, we'll do an addendum to the current long-range transportation plan. In fact, for the previous one, we did the same. The plan was approved in December of 2004, and in 2007, we did an addendum to the, to the plan to consider some new elements of the Federal Highway Administration that were required by the plan. And that's what we are planning on doing with this current plan that is being approved at this time by different agencies.
Okay. One, one of the things that, that, well, I was one of the lucky few who managed to get a copy of the, of the PDF files of the newer version before noon on Saturday, before the CCRPC site crashed, or whatever. And, you know, if you read your, if you read your packet very carefully, the URL I think was in there or something. Somehow I got the URL, I don't know whether Gary sent it to me. Anyway, I downloaded the newer version, and I got to read through it and compare it against the, the listing of major changes, which was very useful. So there are a lot of, very good points have been, you know, I really appreciate the fact that a number of things have been corrected, and added in, and commented. I still think that one of the things that is really missing in here is, is the issue of how fringe roads really meet some of our needs, and it's not clear to me how that works. I don't see the data yet that show, you know, what, what's this benefit of fringe roads? And I gave a counter example in my comments to the LRTP showing, you know, or actually, Gary and I submitted a, a document, doing some calculations, showing two different routes. You know, the route you guys were suggesting, you know, people taking fringe roads versus using just existing roads. And, and Google Maps backed us up and said that, you know, well, if you take the fringe road approach that was being suggested, it takes you what, four minutes longer, Gary? It's about four minutes longer to do that than actually just using the existing roads that are in place today. And so I don't see the benefit of some of this fringe road construction that's out there. On the other hand, at the same time, I know we have to plan for new roads, and I have no problem, and I've said this about Curtis Road, when Urbana grows to Curtis Road on the south, then it would be appropriate to improve Curtis Road to handle that. But until then, and I just don't see putting in a road just to put in a road. And so, so I think, you know, compact development needs to be emphasized in here, and I've submitted some other, I could, I could get in and make some comments, which I'll, I'll do later, since this is just question time now, but, you know, that, that's one of the issues. And then the, the big point that I have, while I've got everybody here, is where is the justification for expanding I-74? It's not in the models, it's not, it's just simply, there's a statement that says, oh, this will relieve future congestion, but there's no modeling that says that there's any congestion even in 2035.
The justification for that is the Capitol bill. That project was included in the Capitol bill, and it was required by IDOT to be part of the transportation program for the community, because it's part of the community. It wasn't a project that was discussed at any of the QAT's technical or policy committee meetings. It was just a project that was approved at the state level. And in order for them to move forward with this project, need to be in the long-range transportation plan.
What if, what if, you know, but, but there's no justification for it?
I never got any justification.
Okay, so I think, I think then, then a statement needs to be included in the long-range transportation plan, that this is being forced on us by the state government, okay? That, you know, they, they want it in the plan, it's not, it's not justified by our modeling, okay? You know, to me, that is the single biggest, you know, sore point in this whole thing is, is an unjustified expense of $71 million that I could use in so many better ways for both cities and the county. You know, there's so many better things we could do with 71 million than to pave over five or six miles of highway in each direction.
The money is not coming to here directly. It's not coming through QATs to be distributed, the money for this roadway at all, is not coming down to.
No, no, I understand, it's state money, it's state money, it's still the taxpayer, it's the taxpayers' money. Okay, and I think people need to know that here's $71 million that, that we're being told that we have to use and have to put in our plan, but there's no justification for it. I believe that Senator McCain has a term for it, okay? And we all know what that is, okay? So I'd like to know, you know, what's the justification for this? I want the taxpayers to know that we're being told, you know, include 71 million in here, included in our long-range plan, like we want it, okay? I don't want it. I don't want to see, I don't want to see more pavement covering ecologically sensitive areas or whatever, more stormwater runoff or whatever, when we don't need it, okay? This is a project we don't need. The state has better uses for $71 million.
Anyone else have a question? Diane?
Just one question. I will say, I was very frustrated. I read through the plan early last week, made a few notes, was planning to look through it all again this past weekend, and the QAT's website was down all weekend, so I was not able to go back and make the notes and the comments that I wanted to actually make. But anyway, one thing that did catch my eye the first time I went through is that in the MOE section of this, or MEO, I guess it's MOE section, it said that the number of personal vehicles registered in Champagne County increased 11% between 2004 and 2008. Is that typical increase for a four-year period like that? And is that being used as the basis for the, this plan out to 2035?
Before, we were not able to get that data. That data now is available at the website, and we cannot compare with previous years because we don't have access to that data. And that's why now we are collecting all that data, and we hope in the next transportation plan to be able to compare numbers.
So 2004 is your base year?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Before 2004, we were not able to get that data. The data wasn't available.
So you're talking about registered?
Registration.
Registered vehicles, and you could not get that from the Secretary of State's office?
Before 2004, no.
Seems like basic information.
Yes.
No? Okay, any other questions? We have a resolution to endorse the Urbana urbanized, Charlie?
Well, I, I don't think we've seen the entirety of the plan. The addendums aren't available on the website. Many of you haven't seen the final version of the plan, so I would strongly encourage us to send this to committee, so that we have a chance to review the full document. I am not comfortable approving something for which I haven't seen all of the pieces. I've read through the original 150 pages and the new version of 150 pages, so I'm comfortable with that portion, but, but the addendums and stuff aren't out there, and I'd like to see how the modeling is done, and see if we can get an answer to, or at least the statement included in the LRTP about I-74.
We didn't do any changes to the model from the previous document.
Okay, well, but I mean, there's supposed to be some addendums that explain the model, and, and some additional stuff that are mentioned here in, in this revision, or the revision list.
We didn't change the financial aspects, but.
Yeah, well, you know, there's no reason this couldn't be passed on the, on the 21st, right?
Well, we need to submit the plan.
What, when do you need to submit the plan?
Before December 31st.
Okay, well, then, well, we have a meeting on the 21st.
Yeah, but before that, we'll have to go to approve.
Well, you know, here's the problem I have, Rita. Anytime somebody brings me something, anytime somebody brings me something at the last possible moment, I feel like it's being force-fed. I'm being force-fed, and I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable signing off on a document I haven't seen all the pieces on, so I'm not willing to go forward. And if, if, if we don't send this to committee, I'll move to defer this.
One thing is that this plan is going to be changed when we get the new census information, correct?
Yes.
So I don't think it can be taken so literally, and we could investigate and see if there's actually politics at play in Springfield on the, I would be shocked. However, you know, that's probably what happened on I-74. And we can uncover that, but that doesn't take away the need to have a plan on file which can be adjusted as we get better information.
And I would say that, that we can do that on the 21st.
Does that interfere with your submitting of this?
Ideally, QAT's technical approved the plan last week. We are bringing the plan to QAT's policy this coming Wednesday, in two days. And after that, it's going to the CCRPC Board for approval on the 18th. And between the 18th and the 31st, we need to print out the document and send it to IDOT on Federal Highway.
Move to defer?
I'll second that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question about schedule?
Yeah, Brandon.
So if that's a motion to defer, I guess I wonder if it's possible to schedule a special City Council meeting for next Monday? I mean, so that, I mean, I understand the request to be able to review more documents. If you're.
So this can get approved by the QAT's committee, and if Urbana submits a resolution later, does that make a difference? Or is the main thing?
Not really. What good would lie is to have the resolution from the Urbana City Council with the document when we send it to IDOT on Federal Highway. And that will happen between the 18th and the 31st. But if you are planning on bringing this to the meeting on the 21st, if we get it immediately, we will be able to insert it into the document for sending the document to IDOT.
Okay.
But need to be done right immediately to be able to.
Okay, Dennis?
I guess I have a question, but similar to Brandon's. And if we, our next meeting is going to be a committee meeting, this is a City Council meeting, the next meeting will be a committee meeting. That's, is that the one that we're, why don't we use that one to review the document? That's next week?
Oh, we can, we can do that too, but I, it's been moved and seconded, it's not debatable. By our rules, this is deferred to the 21st. We can, it can be discussed all we want at the next committee meeting, and I would agree, I would suggest that we take up Brandon's motion at that, at that committee meeting.
Why didn't, I'm, I'm curious to know why you didn't, why, why you didn't ask that it be done at the next committee meeting on the 14th? Wouldn't that be adequate time to review these materials? One week?
I was, it makes no difference, we have a committee meeting on the 21st.
We can always have a special, we can have a special council meeting on, on the 14th.
Yes, you took.
Before the committee meeting.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Heather?
We have to move on, we have rules.
I, I'm going to put my citizen's hat on and say, Mayor, is there a possibility of your, of the city council having their committee of the whole, and then having a special council next week?
Actually, if we're going to have a special council, it needs to be held before the committee meeting. But there's no reason that we couldn't have a council meeting. But there's no reason that we couldn't have a council meeting next week, that it would be a special council meeting. But you're not, by our rules, we're not supposed to have a meeting after a committee meeting, I believe. Or if it's just a question of the topic can't be discussed at the committee meeting?
I think that we would have a topic, but it goes straight to.
Yeah, it's to.
It's to have a special committee, but it didn't take the topics.
Yeah, right. So if it, if it isn't taken up at the committee, is it okay to have it at the, have a council meeting afterwards? Do you have the rules with you, Madam Clerk?
Because can you take a subject matter, a subject, as long as you don't take a subject from a special committee, excuse me, from a committee to a special council meeting, you can have a council meeting right after the committee meeting. That's correct.
Okay. But it doesn't really matter because we could have it before or after. We have that choice. Maybe not after, but I know we can have one before. We, in other words, we can have a special council meeting the same day as a committee meeting. But apparently Charlie would like to have it on the twenty-first, unless he's changed his mind. Has not changed his mind.
Can I ask a question again?
Dennis, yes.
Well, considering that there's also a Christmas vacation involved in this, and there's going to be people that, there's going to be times when the city offices are going to be closed, is that going to be a problem for filing and completing this report?
No, we'll be working. We'll be getting everything done because for, by federal law, we need to submit the document before December thirty-first.
And the, the document doesn't actually need the, the support of the city of Urbana, does it, to go forward? Because according to the, according to your memorandum, it's going to go forward in any, at any case. It would just really make Urbana's part of the, the road, the road and infrastructure requests more valid in the eyes of the state.
Yeah.
So if, if this was submitted and it didn't have approval by the city council, we may or may not get funding for certain projects that we're interested in.
Yeah. Brandon?
Yeah, I just wanted to note one thing for the record, and yeah, I think Charlie's right, the deferral is done. I just wanted to make mention of a piece of paper I left on everyone's desk that I think went to the clerk as well, which was a suggested motion. I'm one of those people who wants to support this plan, but also to note some of these things we had talked about, some of our concerns, like about the VMT growth or the fact that our models couldn't take certain things into account yet, and to encourage further debate, you know, as a community, that we do take into this all into account and figure out how our greenhouse gas goals can align with our transportation planning and all of that over time. So I had a proposed motion for that and, and the piece of papers with the clerk, so it can become a public document, and it was passed out here tonight. I'll be absent next Monday, but hopefully participating by teleconference because I'll be out of town. So, you know, I'm happy to sort of submit this wording, but I probably won't be here to be part of any detailed conversation about amending it or changing it or anything.
Okay, so you want this on the agenda for the committee meeting?
Yeah, if we could even include this in the packet when we do bring the LRTP topic up at the, the committee or the council meeting.
Okay.
So that, so that everybody's got a copy of, of that written.
Yeah, okay. We'll put it on the agenda for the fourteenth, and the resolution is deferred until the twenty-first, but in the meantime, it'll get loaded on by QATs. So we can have a nice discussion on the twenty-first. And we'll move on. Thank you very much. We'll move on to resolution number two thousand and nine dash twelve dash oh three seven R, a resolution granting Comcast.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, Alderman Bolivar-Sox, do you have a motion on, on the table?
No, I'm sorry.
I mean, out for consideration?
I didn't have a motion at all tonight. I just wanted to, there was a, a motion written on paper that I had distributed to everybody that hopefully we could include in the packet and be part of the conversation when we come back to the LRTP.
Okay.
But yeah, I don't want to actually make the motion this evening.
Okay.
We're just requesting something to be on the agenda for next week.
Okay, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Resolution number two thousand and nine dash twelve dash oh three seven R, resolution granting Comcast of Illinois, Indiana, Ohio LLC, a franchise extension to April first, 2010.
Move approval.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Mr. Here. I'm sorry. Seconded by Heather Stevenson. Mr. Here.
Well, I'd like for our committee meeting next week, I'm wondering if we have a closed session on what the status of the negotiations are.
Certainly.
And what, what the issues are and stuff like that, just to give us a closer look at that.
Sure. I'll, I'll double-check and make sure I can, that there is a Open Meetings Act exception that would be placed under. I'm pretty sure there is. I just want to be able to, but I, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. We're very close to concluding this, and I'd be happy to share that, the progress with you all.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else about this resolution? No comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.